Okay, here we go. Uh, call the regular council meeting, November seventh, to order at six thirty. Uh, all of council is present, so we have quorum. Um, next thing is pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, the next item is, uh, proclamation for, um, municipal court week, and I will read that in just a second. Okay. In recognition of municipal court week, November sixth through tenth, twenty twenty-three, whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Clear Lake Shores Municipal Court is a state court, and its judges are members of state judiciary. Whereas the procedures of the Clear Lake Shores Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and other laws of the state of Texas. Whereas the city of Clear Lake Shores is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and the court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas Clear Lake Shores municipal judges are not policymakers for the city of Clear Lake Shores, but are bound by the law and the canus of judicial conduct, and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. Whereas the city council recognizes that the constitution of the laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards and criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Clear Lake Shores Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore be it set forth by the city council of the city of Clear Lake Shores, Texas, that the week of November sixth through tenth, twenty twenty-three, is hereby recognized as municipal court week in recognition of the fair and impartial judge justice offered to our citizens by the municipal court of the city of Clear Lake Shores. Alrighty. Okay, next up is, uh, reports from council. Ed Waters?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, everybody that missed the barbecue cook-off, they missed a good time, and for us judges, we really had a good time over there. Clint can talk about that. Uh, they did a great job, and, uh, I think we've probably had a lot of good funds come out of that for our, uh, for our kids here in the, in the city when it comes up for graduation time.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, Rick Fisher?
Yeah, just a couple of things from Parks and Pool. Um, I'm not sure exactly when that meeting was that y'all had, uh, for the, uh, all the new members, but, uh, the new Parks and Pool Committee, uh, did meet, and they went ahead and elected Mary Kumey over here as the new president. Congratulations, Mary. And, uh, the one thing they did come up with that is they're gonna now move their, uh, meetings now is going to be the second Tuesday of every month, uh, after the, uh, the Tuesday after the city council meeting, uh, at one in the afternoon. So if anybody's interested in coming to those. Um, also for, uh, Parks and Pool, um, it's been almost a year since we, uh, lost our neighbor Craig Ward, and we've been talking about doing the, uh, bench. Was actually, we've actually been in touch with Rainelle, and her request was to wait until, uh, December of this year, when she could have more family in town to do it. So we have a date now, Tuesday, November, uh, December second, uh, is when we're gonna be doing the dedication, uh, for, uh, Craig Ward, uh, and, uh, the bench out there in, uh, Jarboe Park. Um, we haven't come up with a, uh, time yet, we will, uh, we'll announce that, uh, and hopefully everybody can come out. I think it, uh, I think you'll really like what, uh, what we've got planned out there. It's gonna look really good.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, Jeff Terrell?
Uh, nothing to report at this time.
All right, uh, Alex Scammer?
Thanksgiving with the Civic Club is this weekend. If anybody wants to come out at four AM in the rain when the cold front's coming through, we're gonna be out back cooking turkeys.
Thanks, Alex. Mayor Pro Tim, Amanda Penwick?
I don't have any report tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Really? Nothing exciting? Busy as you may? Okay, I have a list of things. Um, I have a bunch of dates to remember. We got a lot of activity going on, so, um, like Alex said, November eleventh, uh, the Thanksgiving dinner here at the clubhouse. Uh, also on November eleventh, we hadn't put anything out yet, 'cause I was trying to secure, uh, the people to come for it, but, uh, we're gonna have a little, uh, dedication to the veterans down at, uh, Sundial Park if the weather permits. Mr. Donaldson let me know that there's a pretty good chance of rain, so we may relocate that. Um, I'll get that out there just as soon as I can, once we look at the weather again tomorrow. Uh, November eighteenth, grand opening and ribbon cutting for the Galveston Bay Brewery at two o'clock. Um, I'm hoping all of us will be there. I know you had something to do, or somebody had something to do, uh, look forward to that. Uh, November thirtieth, we're having a Christmas golf cart parade. The lineup is at five o'clock, uh, right in front of Jarboe Park, followed by the Christmas tree lighting, uh, around six o'clock. Um, I think there are some things out there about that already, just keep that in mind. It's gonna be a fun time. Uh, Amanda's kinda ran with it. She was wanting to do that a few years back, didn't get the opportunity. She wasn't in town, so she's got the opportunity, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh, December second, uh, like Rick said, we'll be, uh, doing a little dedication for Craig Ward out in the park. Anybody welcome to come? It's an open invitation. Um, that'll be nice also. Uh, December seventh, um, staff Christmas party. Um, keep that date open, in case y'all approve that tonight. Uh, no, we're having the staff party, I'm sorry. That will be at Top Golf, four to six, um, all of council is invited. Um, the Clear Lake Boat Parade is December ninth, so we are sponsors of that once again. Um, so that'll be happening, everybody get out and go to the boat parade, that'll be fun. And December eleventh is the Volunteer Committee Christmas Party, providing that gets approved tonight. Um, so keep that date open for all of you volunteers. Um, and with that, I'd like to say, thank all the volunteers. We need all of you to make all this happen. We can't afford to pay people to do all these things, and you guys do a wonderful job, so thanks for all that. All right, with that, next up is Police Chief David Donaldson. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, um, we would like to give a special thanks to, uh, our Public Works Department, Jorge and Odie. Um, in my mind, they might be two guys, but they're a department for us, and, and they do a really good job. Um, they help everybody. I know they do things for people out in the community. People call them on their cellphone, ask them to do things, and, and they're just, I don't know how you could find two other guys like that that go above and beyond. You know, Brad and I were talking about this the other day, they're just exceptional guys. So, with that said, um, they work through all the weather conditions without complaining, uh, you know. They take on any small handyman jobs, they do it with pride, they do a really good job at what they do, they don't just throw things together. I mean, we had them close this in for storage, and it looks like it's been here forever. They do really good work. Uh, they work really close with the committees, lending a hand to whatever they can do. And, uh, Christie brought up a good point. Christie came up with this idea, and we bought a, uh, thank you card. Of course, we know they're not here at the meeting. So pass the word around the island, it's a big thank you card, it's big enough for everybody to come, and they wanna write a little something for them, if they, you know, got any pictures, a little video, anything like that you wanna bring forward to commend those guys, we would like that. We're going to present that to them at the committee party, or at the staff party, I'm sorry. So, we'd like to do that. We'd like for y'all to participate. I'm sure y'all have some good stories about those guys. It's not required, but if you'd like to give them a gift, you can surely do that, and we'll present that to them. You give me a gift too, if you want. I'm, I'm teasing. No, but if you see them out in the neighborhood, make sure you thank them, they do a lot of good work. Okay, Chief Donaldson, you're up.
Mayor, council, I'd like to let y'all know that we are now in, uh, Texas City using their jail, their facility. Um, it's still work in progress with, uh, Christie being involved in a whole lot of parts of it. Um, traffic contacts, one seventy-five, narcotic offenses, zero, accidents, two. Total arrests was four, and that's just because we recently just got hooked up with the jail, so they'll wind up picking up. Uh, two disturbances, two undesirables, agency assists, seven business checks, five fifty-three, residential checks, one twenty, and alarm calls, four. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Uh, before we go on, I forgot to mention, if you do have something for those guys, uh, you'd like to personally share, make sure you get connected with Christie, and you're gonna have that card. Is it here tonight?
The card's over here.
So the card is over here on the table tonight, and if you spread the word to anybody else, just tell them, go to the city hall, get with Christie, she'll have it after tonight. That brings up you, Brad Gaddy.
Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, before I get started off my report, I would like to make a quick plug. It is very important to us to ensure that all our residents and citizens are staying informed. If you are not currently signed up to get the newsletter and the other notifications of meetings and stuff, go to our website, and under the "I Want To" section, you can sign up for two options, it's CLS Connect, which is our emergency notifications, so the events of storms, you'll receive notifications there, and then E-Notify, which you can sign up for as much or little as you want, from meeting notifications, to RFP, uh, to the newsletter. And the newsletter's what I wanna really highlight, one of our ways of keeping you informed is, uh, through their city newsletter, that's a wonderful job's done by Valerie, our communications person. And, uh, uh, so really, if you haven't got there, you're having trouble, get ahold of us at City Hall, we'll make sure you're getting, getting the notifications. Uh, this month, and it's hard to do this while it's eighty-five degrees outside, we are shifting our focus on our risk for the winter months, uh, carbon monoxide, space heaters and stuff, so get a copy of that newsletter, and remember those safety measures for the coming cold months. Some of the projects currently going on, you're gonna start see, we're working on getting some quotes and some crews scheduled on to do some, uh, working with roads and drainage on getting some crack seal maintenance on our roads, kind of extend the life till we have major projects done on that. So as they're in our community, we just ask that you're using your full attention and keeping their safety in mind. Uh, work at the Oak East Parking Lot has been completed now. Uh, finally got the drainage straightened out over there, we got a fence that goes in between, uh, the two properties that'll be going down. Parking canopy, which was approved at the last meeting at ARPA funds, has now been completed, and I'm proud to say that we did get our WPI eight certificate last week as well, so it's, uh, uh, real proud of the way it came out, looks very nice. Uh, our contractor, uh, working on the cav, is still working forward, making progress on that, meeting all the requests that FEMA has asked of that, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a, uh, more update for you on that information as well. Uh, if you haven't noticed it, uh, the EDC purchased a new rideshare bench, which is, uh, installed at parking lot there at Aspen and Clear Lake Road. Uh, it came out very nice, and I think they made a good selection on, for the EDC. Uh, recently, for some of you have probably experienced the issue with the short cycle on the left turn lane from twenty ninety-four on a Clear Lake Road. I'm proud to say that Tech Stop did get in there and get that resolved, so hopefully it's better for you. If you're still seeing op, uh, problems, make sure we know, 'cause as far as we know, everything's been resolved there. I think it's, uh, the last, uh, the, uh, had the critical dates that you've already mentioned, Mayor, and I think that's the extent of my report.
Well, and just, and just to add to that, you did, you did ask about making that a flashing yellow light, so we're waiting on a response for that as you turn into Clear Lake Shores. Okay, with that said, we'll move on to public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council if the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda. The comments may be made now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city cannot, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. So, we had a clock, clock didn't work, so we got a new clock, and this clock works. So, when you're speaking, please, I, I don't wanna have to make you stop speaking, I don't wanna be ugly, just pay attention to the time, let's cut it off at three minutes and let the next person speak. So, thank you. Does anyone want to address the city council? You're not gonna make me use this clock? Really? Nobody right now? Okay, we'll close. Next item up is, uh, consent agenda. Um, item A, the check register, ten twelve to twenty-three through eleven, one twenty-three. Do we have anything on the consent agenda anyone would like to pull? Okay. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, consent agenda for, uh, for this month.
And I'll second that.
Got a motion by Rick, got a second by Ed. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I just sent a couple, just grammatical changes, um, to Christie already from the minute, that's it.
Okay, you got those? All right. Need to amend the motion with the changes?
I don't think so.
Oh, we good?
Good.
All right. Any more discussion on that? Okay. All in favor? Make sure we look at Alex this time. Motion passes unanimous. Next item, new business, discussion of possible action may be taken on the following items. Approve employee holiday schedule for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Brad, do you'd like to speak on that?
Just quick notice that this is standard business practice, the council approves those, uh, ho, city holidays each year. The number of hours is still the same as it was last year, it's just getting a formal approval and adoption by council.
I'll motion to approve the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Alex, got a second by Jeff. Any discussion on this?
I just have a question, do we typically follow the federal schedule, or, 'cause I ask only because Juneteenth is not on here, and that's a federal holiday, and so I just wondered if that is typical, if, like, we follow the federal holiday schedule, or do we just kind of? Do we have to?
No.
No, and, and it's very not, non-typical of most city municipal governments.
Even though it's a federal holiday?
Right, and, and a lot of them, they will, they will take that flex and move that eight hours of a federal holiday to another time in the year for...
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, we good? Any more discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Um, next item, uh, approve to cancel the city council meeting regularly scheduled for November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, due to the Thanksgiving holiday. So, that's gonna fall within a couple days of, uh, Thanksgiving, and so everyone can be with their family. This was brought up, that we just canceled that meeting. I don't think we have anything pressing. If we do, we're, we're gonna get it on the next meeting in December. So, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to approve the council, the city council meeting regularly scheduled for November the twenty-first.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Ed, got a second by Amanda. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. All right, brings us to the next item, item C, approve the city, approve to cancel the city council meeting regularly scheduled for December nineteenth, due to Christmas holiday season. Kind of a similar thing, all the kids, a lot of people are gonna be off during that time for Christmas, uh, so this falls under the same guidelines as that, we'll have one meeting in December.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve to cancel the city council meeting regularly scheduled for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Got a motion by Jeff?
I'll second that.
Got a second by Ed. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Um, item D, consider authorizing the city administrator to expend seven thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars from the ARPA funds for purchase of an installation of a shade canopy at the city hall. Brad?
Yes, uh, mayor and council, as mentioned, this is another ARPA purchase, and it is a motorized commercial canopy that will go over the upstairs balcony where the generator's at, and we got a picnic table right now. Uh, it is, uh, as mentioned, motorized with a ten-year warranty. It's got the remote control, the wind sensor, so if the wind gets up too much, it automatically closes itself, and when it's in the closed mode, it's actually stored in a protective structure to kind of preserve that life.
May I move to approve the city administrator to expend seventy-two twenty-nine from ARPA funds for the purchase and installation of a shade canopy at city hall?
Okay, got a motion by Amanda?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Rick? Any discussion on this candidate? All in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Um, item E, approve an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars for the committee volunteers' Christmas party. So I will say, I think it's important that we recognize our volunteers. Um, we haven't been able to do that the past couple of years, so, uh, due to COVID and whatnot, um, I just think they're very important and vital to the city, and some people look forward to that.
I'll move to approve an amount not to exceed seven thousand for the committee volunteer Christmas party.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Amanda, got a second by Jeff. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Uh, item F, receive presentation and consider granting expanded right-of-way access to John Schaefer for property located at eight twenty-two Clear Lake Road. Brad?
Yes, mayor and council, we've got, uh, Mr. Schaefer here tonight to kind of propose his concept, and, uh, what he's looking to do with that, so I'm gonna turn it over to him at this time. Also present for questions is, uh, prob, building owner Frank Tambro.
You on here? Members of council, Mayor, thank you very much for giving me the moment to come talk to you guys about what we're looking to do across the street over there at the former, uh, Soul Freak location. Um, Soul Freak came available a couple months ago, and, uh, Frank and I got in negotiations, started talking about, is there something we can do there? And, uh, I said, "Well, we've got employees, we've got relationships, so Outriggers is actually, to kind of quent, to quell the lot of the rumors, Outriggers, uh, unfortunately is back on hold." Um, we had a location in Clear Lake, it was on the channel, um, it was in Seabrook Shipyard, and we have not finished the negotiation, so Outriggers is still not, uh, breathing yet. So, the next best thing was to take this little location across the street and build little Outriggers through the bar and room. So the whole idea is to go ahead and create an environment a lot like Outriggers. Imagine Key West meets Clear Lake Shores, we'd serve a little bit of food out of, uh, Schaefer's in a to-go capacity, items are maybe ten, fifteen, twenty items at the most. Build a bar, have a cool, like, craft cocktail, kind of rum-type deal, um, go put a little stage like what Soul Freak used to have, you know, a guy picking a guitar with one speaker, you know, just kind of, kind of very laid-back, you know, kind of place, and then if we're not doing live music, Jimmy Buffett, Kenny Chesney's playing music on the radio, just a very relaxed environment, lots of TVs, come watch the game. We're gonna go ahead and design it to where, um, our target market is probably twenty-five to thirty and above. I'm not interested in having the twenty-one-year-olds with, you know, the affliction shirts on, all muscle-bound gorillas and wanting to fight and all that kind of stuff, I don't think chief police wants that either, so we're gonna try to keep it clean, run it clean. Um, I run a clean business at Schaefer's, it'll be the same way, we're not gonna tolerate much. Um, try to enhance the community, enhance the, the center, the town center, and, um, in doing this, unfortunately, the building is only a thousand square feet, right? So this is our challenge that we face. You know, we're gonna spend a quarter million dollars on the building, overall, if what we're about to discuss gets approved by council, and to repay that kind of money, pay rent, insurance, and the whole nine, you have to generate revenue. You're not gonna generate enough revenue with a thousand square feet, which, if you did not have the outside area, which we're about to discuss, and they'll put it up on the television in a minute here, we can't create the revenues, I can't get the rear ends and the seats to generate the revenue to pay all the bills. So, unfortunately, council, you guys have a decision to make to, either this business is gonna move forward, or it can't, because I've got to build a patio outside. In the design phase, when I was talking to Brad, and I was talking to Angie, we were in the beginning stages, we were gonna enclose this area. If you guys, do you guys have all the stuff there to show? Can you put up the, the, the vision of what it looks like in that 3D rendering I had done? And we'll, we'll, we'll go through some of these. Um... Is that the second one? There it is.
There it is.
Okay, so, this is kind of our idea, okay? You can see where Soul Freak was there, the building, and then you can see where the existing deck is, that palapa goes with the existing deck that's already there, okay? You can see the stop sign. Originally, we were gonna go ahead, and we wanted to go ahead and put in the, the isinglass like we have over at Schaefer's on the back patio, put an air conditioner in it, put a heater in it, so we had an outdoor space. It came up pretty quickly in conversation that, well, we have a problem because of the stop sign there, and it's actually gonna block the view of oncoming traffic. I totally agreed, I understood, so now the concept has changed to where the, that patio cover is going to be there, but there's gonna be nothing on the walls. We also redesigned the fencing, as you can see, where it's see-through, they call that ranch style. If you've ever been to a ranch, or you go to the restaurant on the back patio, it's the same design. It's minimal blockage, it's minimal view of, uh, obstruction to oncoming traffic, and we're trying to create a more, a safer environment, if council grants the palapa to be built. Um, again, television will be hanging outside, they won't be in the way, the roof is actually probably gonna be, those main joists coming across, ah, I'm gonna go nine, ten feet, 'cause we have to have the roof of the palapa come over the roof of the existing building, so that the six-inch gutter can catch all of the water that's gonna be coming down the roof, and then be discharged into the city sewer system, or into the storm drains or whatever we're gonna have. So, the real question is, 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 there's a site survey issue, because the city actually owns, if you can go back to the survey, we only come off the building twelve feet approaching, uh, it, it would be parallel to Aspen Road, or Aspen Drive, so if you go back here, one more, one, that, we can use that one, can you blow that one up by chance? Okay, this, this is the survey, kind of, this is my best, if you can go a couple more back? Okay, that's the survey itself that shows the palapa, but anyways, we've only got twelve feet coming off the building, so between the property line, where the cert survey is, and the actual existing decking that's already there, is about six point eight, it's about six and a half, almost seven feet. So to put the palapa in, I need to have the city grant me the access to use that right-of-way so that that palapa sits where the existing deck is, so that I can build it. So that I can generate the revenue I need, so I go from four hundred square feet to about twelve hundred square feet, I can get fifty people in there, I can generate probably anywhere from three and a half, three hundred and fifty, to maybe six, seven hundred thousand. So look at it from a tax standpoint of anywhere from thirty-five to maybe, I don't know, fifty-five thousand? So, there's gonna be some tax dollars coming to you guys then, I don't know what percentage that you guys get, but there is some tax revenue in there, so... So we're kind of here to see if y'all have any questions, if I can convince you that this is the way to go and, and just see if it's, if I can get some approval from you guys. So it's kind of where it's at.
Okay, how far does that bring the Palapa away from Clear Lake Road?
Uh, if you go back to, I believe we're going to be, does that have a figure on it? Probably about six or seven feet. About seven foot from the road. So there's not, there's not going to be any hindrance.
Yeah.
And the way we're going to build the Palapa is it's going to stop, we're going to, I think the design will only overhang, I think, one foot. Because if you look, when we go back to that rendering, it hangs a little bit over the rail, but it's, it won't, it won't cause any kind of obstruction to any vehicles or whatever moving by.
And you're proposing to put the stop right all the way in the middle of the round corner time? That's exactly what you're going to have to do.
Yeah, unfortunately, it is because it's difficult, so actually, your dad and I had this conversation, we were trying to figure out how to get this roof to work because it's easier to build a square than it is to try to build like, I guess you'd call it a trapezoid because of the roof lines that would follow the existing decking where it is, that ten feet or whatever it is, if you look. So unfortunately, yeah, and we would mitigate that, and, you know, I think that's going to be a, if we approve, it's going to have to go through, talk to Brad about that, talk to planning, talk to the police chief, talk to inspectors and see what we need to do with that.
And you say you're spending, estimating two hundred and fifty thousand, what is, I mean, that's not just for the Palapa?
No, the Palapa's about thirty, I think the bid came in. So the Palapa, the deck, the handrail is right at about thirty-three or thirty-four thousand. And then we've got another, probably leasehold another ninety to a hundred. Then we've got some soft costs, probably about another thirty-five to forty in improvements inside the structure, ice machines, coolers, bar builds. And we're also, you know, I, the fortunate thing about owning restaurants on the water for as long as I have, you learn about hurricanes, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So if you go into Schaefer's, any of you can go in there, if you kick the walls, they're all concrete board. Everything is closed cell phone behind that. We went back in with some really good, heavy-duty marine-grade treated wood, right? So that there's no mold, things like that. So what we're going to do here is I'm going to gut the entire inside. We're going to try to save the ceiling, but after meeting with GBS Electric, we're just going to go ahead and do a full gut on the inside, everything's coming out, back down to studs. We're going to do all the infrastructure at five and a half feet because we're going to come back in with closed cell phone on all exterior walls, and then we're going in with half-inch concrete board all the way up. So all electrical is actually above code, and it's not a matter of if. If it's a matter of when we flood, it's a real simple come-in, power wash it, hit the walls, put in the five commercial dehumidifiers, dry it out for four or five days, get some blessing from the city to go ahead and reopen, paint the walls and go at it. So that's going to run about fifteen, maybe sixteen grand. Plumbing, we've got a couple of issues we have to deal with, we've got to cut a trench to facilitate the bar, which is going to be in the middle of the, of the current structure. And we've got some issues outside we have to deal with, so we're about ten or eleven thousand there. I don't have the electrical bid, I'm guessing twelve to fifteen thousand there. HVAC, it's got a three-ton unit, that's not going to cut it. If anybody was in Soul Freak in the summertime, it was hot as heck in there, they were running fans and everything else. So we're going to refurbish the three-ton, but then we're also going to put a five-ton split in. So we'll have eight total tons inside the structure to control the air quality and the comfort level. So that's about eight, nine thousand, granny, I got a pretty good deal, sorry. He's like, really? I didn't get a chance to bid it, you know? So we've got some money going in there.
That's funny, you never have used me, just for the record.
We need to change that. So then we've got, we've got, we've got to paint the structure. Frank and I are having some bantering back and forth about colors and things of that nature. Frank's not real crazy about me painting the building, he likes his colors. Outside of that, we're going to put a roll-up garage door where the third window is facing Clear Lake Road. It's a hundred and twenty-eight miles an hour, a hundred and twenty-two, something like that, it's all storm rated. And that'll facilitate the outside because we're the, I don't really have a picture of it, I wish I would have sent it to you guys before plan, but the bar kind of goes, if you imagine this is the middle of the building, right? And this is the door that goes to Schaefer's, and this is Clear Lake Road, the bar actually sits like this, right? So when you're inside, there's chairs over here, chairs over here, and then the bar wraps around. Well, there's a roll-up garage door right here in that middle, so if you're sitting outside on the Palapa, you can walk up and order a drink. If you're inside, you can do the same thing because there's a designated area. Again, I've learned this from being in the business forever, and there's a four-foot basically walk-up spot at the bar. So, and that'll be all storm rated, we close that at night for security purposes and whatever else. That's about it. We're going to employ, I think the business plan has employment of fifteen people because we're going to have, our shifts are probably, for the kids in high school, probably twelve to maybe eighteen hours maximum, bartenders and a manager, you know, you add those up. We're going to be open Tuesday through Sunday, closed on Mondays. With all the hours of operation, we don't plan on being open past one o'clock. We are going to apply for a late-night permit, MB mixed, so we can sell everything, wine, liquor, beer, frozen drinks, whatever. With a late-night permit, like I have at Schaefer's, but we really never use it, but if we ever need it, it's there. During the week, we plan on having the place closed by eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, and seeing how the business evolves will kind of determine that. And then on the weekends, on Friday and Saturday, I really don't want to be open past one o'clock. It's just, there's too much trouble out there, you know? I don't think the police want to deal with it. That's when all the fights happen. I said this when I had Outriggers, anybody that went to my place, the band stopped at ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, and you had to be out of the building in thirty minutes, you know? It just, I've been doing this too long. So same kind of ideology, you know, I don't think that this island's going to want to be hanging out until two o'clock in the morning anyways. It's an older crowd, I know I like to be in bed by eleven, so, you know? We're building it for the community. This is, hopefully we can attract some people that come in and enjoy it and want to go see Outriggers and get a fish taco and blah, 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 and kind of see some of the old memorabilia that we're going to have on the walls and stuff from Outriggers. But, you know, this is more for the lake. It's more for the lake, and it's more for Clear Lake shores. So we're just giving them another option, you know? Aspen's is there, it has its crowd, Oakey's has its crowd, you know, no one ever is going to compete with, you know, Keeman for breakfast. I've kind of got the nicer establishment where you can come in and flip flops, enjoy yourself and get a nice glass of wine. But I think this is something that's needed, you know? I think it fits, I think it fits the community. I've asked a lot of people about it, I've done a lot of, how would I say this? I've asked a lot of questions, I've asked a lot of opinions about what I'm trying to do, and everybody is loving it. So I think there's going to be a lot of community support for it, and I think that the way I run my businesses is very clean, it'll, it'll really shine well to the city, and I don't think there's going to be any problems. So that's kind of it, guys, that's the business plan, that's what we're looking to do. There's been a lot of rumors about what's going to go on over there, and now you guys know. So without further ado.
So I have a question regarding the agenda item that we're talking about. I love the concept, it's cool, but, so we're still good from a sidewalk standpoint, from an ADA perspective, we're not encroaching on any of that, like that is, that's...
Yeah, if you can pull that three-D rendering back up.
I don't know what those measurements are supposed to be, so that's why I wanted to make sure that...
I know it's over six feet, that's a really wide sidewalk.
Okay.
So if you look at it on the far right, then we pull the rendering, you see where the flowerbed is? So that total structure right there is going to be right at about eighteen and a half, nineteen feet wide at the deck. So if you were to cut that into threes, you can see that the parking, and we'll measure it out, but I think it's six or seven to eight, you're not going to have problems there. At least I don't think so.
And just from perspective, this is the exact same footprint as what Soul Freak's was.
Yeah, the existing deck right now, that's the existing deck of Soul Freak.
Okay.
The only, and actually Alex brought it up, the only thing that we're going to need a little extra is because we can't build that angle right there, not easily anyways, is we're going to have to go a little bit beyond that, it's about, I think Alex wrote, two feet maybe, two and a half feet, something like that.
Is there any way you can actually get us a drawing showing, you know, where the Palapa will be? I mean, we've got this, but I mean, it doesn't show Aspen Road, it doesn't show, you know, I mean, you know, with sidewalk and everything, just how it would fit in there with everything that's currently there.
Okay, if, can you kind of go back? Let me see if we can, no, let me see.
I'm with, I'm with Rick on this. I mean, John, I appreciate what you put together, but I know I'm not going to be able to make any decision with the information we've been presented.
Right.
This is a good intro, but...
You need to see how far it goes out in the...
I mean, it's, yeah, you know, like a more cohesive plan, I mean, pictures of another Palapa as a concept are wonderful, but that's not really what we have to decide.
Yeah, the survey's good, but I mean, it's, like I said, it doesn't show, you know, any of the existing things, Aspen Road, Clear Lake Road, the sidewalk.
So you want, you want to do like an aerial and then like a superimposed...
Exactly.
On an aerial, like a Google?
Yeah.
And then kind of show where it's at? Okay, well, to help here, where the Palapa ends right there on the top left, if you're looking at it, that's the end of the building. So you know where the existing deck is right now that goes out into the sidewalk on Aspen? The Palapa ends at the end of the building. It's not going to extend past the building itself, right? So if you look at that survey picture, can you go back one more? You don't have it, do you? So right there, that's actually a pretty good example. That's what, that's what I did, you see where the block is? So that's kind of where it's going to sit. Oh, yeah. Because you see where the block is right there?
It went up to the ceiling.
It's not going to go past the building. It's not going to go in and get some of the superimposed and that. Right now, the deck actually extends, the current deck, it extends past the building.
It does, yeah.
We're just going to either take that out and concrete it in or put landscape in there or whatever else. Because for us, the concept, the Palapa can't be wider than the building, and the building's at thirty-seven feet. So the Palapa's actually thirty-six feet by, I think it's eighteen point, eighteen and a half, nineteen feet.
So it's just something I'm just kind of curious on, too, I mean, it really doesn't have to do with doing the permit, but I just know also, when Soul Freak was there, anytime they got any kind of heavy rain, they got a lot of water in that place, it's...
So...
Any idea what's causing that, what can you do to mitigate that?
So I don't know what the drainage problem is as far as coming in. Schaefer's has the same problem. I mean, whenever you get a heavy rain, we have to actually go ahead and put pumps in the back door because it comes through the kitchen door. So it just, it is what it is. We are in the process of building, the plumbing plan calls to take the existing floor sink, which is, if you remember going into Soul Freak, that, that three-comp sink right there, we ordered the food, looked left, well, there's a, there's a big box down in the ground, it's a porcelain box, it's about ten by ten, it's called a floor sink. We're going to bust out four feet around that, we're going to find a three-inch pipe, and then we're going to saw cut all the way back to the other side, which would be closest to Clear Lake shores road. And in that trench, we're putting in two floor drains. One will be in the bar, one will be right there in the middle of the dining, in the public use area, and then two new floor sinks to catch water from coolers, sinks, dishwasher machines, whatever else. So as long as the city system doesn't back up, like if we have a hurricane event, we all know what's about to happen. But if we've got water coming into the building, we now have the ability to squeegee it, and as far as the floors, I haven't made a decision whether I'm going to go back in with tile or I'm just going to pull the old tile up, sand it all down, stain it so that it's easy to, and it's a nonsense, it's a nice-looking surface, squeegee everything into those drains. So in the event we do flood, as long as the city sewer system's not backed up, sanitary or drain, I don't know what we're going to go, my plumber will, he'll pull all the permits for that, that's how that'll work. So it allows us to get water out, because right now, when Soul Freak would flood, they couldn't do anything, they're just, it was terrible. Why that's happening, I don't know.
So it sounds like you're, I know we're supposed to talk about the right-of-way, but walls, electrical, roof, plumbing, foundation, every surface and the whole thing stripped it down to studs. How are you avoiding the substantial improvement having to bring that building up to the female elevation? Because that doesn't sound possible.
No, 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 the building itself, as far as the amount of money we're putting in it, is maybe a hundred, maybe a hundred and twenty total. The rest of it's all soft cost. It's all operations, insurance, you start naming it, it's all there. I can provide a lot to you. But on the, on the, on the city rolls, I think it's three hundred and sixty-five thousand? Is that right?
I have, I have no idea, it's just you're touching every single surface and the whole thing. Something considerable. But anyway, back to the right-of-way, which is the, the real topic at hand here. So you're basically asking to build a permanent structure to support a new bar and...
Restaurant.
Kind of, with no kitchen, just the bar, with no kitchen, so...
Right.
On city property, in the right-of-way, the public space, just want to make sure that's the ask, right?
Right, the, the, yeah, the existing deck that's there, I just want to go right over the top.
So did we not grant right-of-way access when they put the deck in? Did we not have to? So why, why, if this is being built on the current deck structure that's there, I'm just curious why this is coming to city council now? And again, newbie, I'm going to claim the newbie card here.
I'll close the newbie card.
Okay.
I don't know, from the evidence we've got, it was done illegally, but it was done without proper permitting and evaluation, and somebody may have a little bit more history than first of all.
Gotcha.
And I just spoke up, if you're looking at me, but...
Yeah, no, the question was directed at you, yes, but now I'm going to look at, down this side of the table.
So all I know about that, Amanda, is that, that we were told by Angie that Kevin approved it. Whether it was done right or wrong, he approved it at the time. And that doesn't make it right.
No, I agree. I'm just curious.
But he did.
Typically, in how the right-of-way ordinances are written, and it's, it's a lot of telecommunications stuff, but you, when you, you ask for a permit in the right-of-way, it's typically things for like ingress and egress to a property like a culvert, you want to put, you want to put pavers in, you want to change something on the surface, there's nothing in there explicitly describing permitting a structure, which the Soul Freak thing is, is kind of a gray area because it's a deck, right? It just makes the surface, it's still walkable, it's still the surface. So there isn't really anything in the ordinances that depict what you have to do to permit a structure in the right-of-way. Quite frankly, it's not, you know, there's nothing that says this is how you permit something in the right-of-way. So this is new, I think it's new territory for this project, and whatever was done in the past was, you know, if they'd filled it in with dirt, would it be any different? Not, not really.
Well, and so are we setting a precedent, too, that's the other question.
I don't know of any other structures that have been allowed in the right-of-way, the street easements, anywhere in the city.
Oh, I can tell you.
So you guys are asking for, in spacing the right-of-way, which I mean, I'd love to see something there, don't get me wrong. I have this, I passed it, I don't know if you want a copy of it. This is, this is a part of the town center rendering from two thousand and thirteen, these are not my notes on it. This is the Aspen Clear Lake Road project. There were some proposed boardwalks, one of which was installed next to Schaefer's, it goes up to the Clear Lake Road bridge that's kind of in the middle. And then down in the bottom left, it says proposed boardwalk. There is a, there's a walking path that's supposed to connect the Oakeys Courtyard to the parking lot and pass to Skippers. But I believe it's my understanding that that path is partially on the opposite side of this property. You know, is that something you would entertain is, you know, if you're, you're asking for some space from us, we could, we could maybe work something out with a path over there?
John, I know, you don't, I know... Are you directing this towards me or Frank?
Well, it's an interesting question because, that's an interesting question because you don't own the property, but you're asking for an easement to build something, so I don't even know the legality of that, so this is...
Oh, is this supposed to come from Frank?
I don't, I don't know. It just, it just showed up on the agenda for us.
Okay, well, uh.
I'm asking if, if y'all are asking for use of our right-of-way because it's, it, it assists and helps you get a business in there or something. You know, we've been working really hard to get connectivity in the city sidewalks, right? Encroaching on a sidewalk in the right-of-way. We'd really like to have connectivity to our parking lot on the opposite side of Okies. We budgeted money for it. Recently, it was made aware that maybe the Okies building is too close to the property line to put that on the Plaza Ten property, which is your property. So I don't know if there's some type of exchange or if we allow this, you'd allow us to put something in over there? Would be possible?
So, so that brings my question. I mean, I'm, I like some of the concepts, you know, there's already something there. But my big question is, are we granting this to you? And what happens if you leave? Or are we actually granting it to him, the building owner? And so my question is directed to you.
Yeah, I think it's going to Frank. I'm just speaking.
So.
But, yeah, if, yeah, definitely it would be granted to him. Um, it's essentially a consent to encroach on the right-of-way. And, you know, that can be negotiable. Um, just like the connectivity that he's talking about. So I, I would suggest that we wind up having a meeting with Frank. And, um, let's see if we can work out some of the details. I was saying that, that I would suggest.
I was saying that I would suggest that, um, perhaps the mayor and city administrator and, um, you know, a few of us have a, a meeting with you to see the details that we can work out between this. Because it's ultimately, you know, you need the city's permission to grant, you know, a consent to encroach. But if the city wants connectivity, they need your, you know, your, your, uh, permission to do so between the two lots. But surely something can get worked out because it sounds like both parties want something. So, um, we'll figure out, the devil's in the details. So that, that's the things that, you know, that would be important, you know, to me. Like, for instance, if it's no longer run as, uh, a palapa that's part of that, that the, that the palapa actually be removed at, at your expense as opposed to the city having to pay to actually remove the palapa. So there, th- those are a lot of, some of the details that, you know, we could talk about. But I would suggest that we have some kind of meeting with you about that.
Yeah, so that, that was more my question. And I, I didn't really think about the connectivity, Alex. But I was thinking more of the logistics, you know, are we granting this to you? Are we leaving it there? It's gonna be a permanent structure? What happens if you leave? There, all that's really gotta be talked about because someday that could happen. Uh, and I don't know what the legality is. So that's where I'm going with this. We really need, we hope you don't leave if you go there. But, um, we need to work that out. That's, that's a lot of internal contract talk that we need to make happen. Because we could all say, okay, yeah, we're in favor, but then all the details, still gotta get worked out, so.
In doing those contracts, Frank owns it, so he has the interest in the property.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I get, I get that part. But there's a lot behind the scenes that need to be worked out as far as how this contract's gonna be written up? If we grant the right-of-way usage? When do we repeal that? If that goes away? How do we do that? Like Dick said, does he remove it at his expense? Do we have to pay to remove it if you're not there anymore?
Well, I would think that.
Those are my questions.
I would think that even if I failed, which I don't like failure, everybody knows me, you know, I don't like to fail. Um, if I did, it's a great location for somebody else to walk into. And I mean, having that palapa does nothing but improve the, the property and the opportunity for who else comes in after me, if I fail, so.
And, and that could be something that's negotiated, you know, with the attorney as far as, is it there forever? Or does it have to be removed? I mean, that all could be talked about. But, um, those are my only concerns. And I will bring up, Brad, that, that I happen to be out there, Rick was out there the other day because we didn't get that final rendering picture in the packet. That came later.
You didn't get that?
And there, no, and there was a question, that's the one that you gave to Angie, I guess a day or two later.
Yeah, so.
So that wasn't in the packet, so it was really hard to see where the sidewalk was. It almost looked like it was gonna encompass the sidewalk. And I know there was some safety issues. When people would leave your restaurant, they, there were chairs all on the sidewalk, so they'd have to walk into the street. And that was pretty dangerous. I was at Soul Freak a lot and witnessed that, so.
That's a great point.
But we went and measured and it, and it wasn't there.
So that's a great point, and I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, because the palapa itself is, it's fenced in, so it's a contained space.
Yes.
The problem with what Soul Freak was doing is there was no containment, right? So everybody could come up and they could, if it was a really good band or whatever, they could pack it out. They would sit all the way out into the street. I mean, I saw cars all the way out to the end of the curb, you know, chairs. I saw people's golf carts parked on the street. So there was a containment problem. With the palapa, if you wanna stand outside the palapa and listen to a guy pick a guitar, you're on public grounds, I can't say anything about that. You wanna put a chair out, I'm gonna call the sergeant on duty and say, hey, we have a problem out here. This gentleman's, you know.
That's a chief, by the way.
Well, no, I'm saying the sergeant. I don't think, you don't work enough, do you? No, no, I just called, I, I've got this, I've got the sergeant's number. So we'd come and say, look, you need to move that. So what, the point I'm trying to get at is the palapa is a fenced-in area. The only way to get onto the palapa is-
Through the building, right?
To go through the building. And then we're gonna have two egresses that are emergency exits with fire extinguishers next to them. In the event something happens, that's the only way to get out, right? So.
Somebody grill.
So, so.
Barbecue now.
So really, there's, there's containment on the actual palapa itself. So once you enter the palapa, the only, the only way you can get out without an alarm going off is to go back through the building and get back out. So we're not gonna have that problem where people are sitting in the right-of-way like what was happening at Soul Freak. So that, that's kind of a, that, that problem got solved.
So I feel like we're at a point where we need to, what's the postpone this, Dick? Is that to a certain date and time?
Table it till there's, can be some discussions, go on one day.
I wanna make sure you use the right language, though.
Yeah, I mean, table, postpone.
Okay.
Yeah.
At, at, at this time, you're obviously not ready to make that decision, so.
We do have a question from the audience. Can we make a question from now? Uh, David, you can stand up and go to the podium if you have a question.
Yes, for record, absolutely, everybody speak at the microphone.
Hi, David Jones, seven twenty-seven Pine. Um, my question is, uh, I know that when Soul Freak was there, probably just a certain amount of parking required because it's a smaller venue. I applaud the idea here because it's good for the revenue of the city and I think it's a cool idea. My question is, because of the nature of it and the target audience, would there be a lot more parking required to handle it? And I know that, you know, you got the brewery there using the parking and you got Shafers and whatever. So I'm just, I don't have a, you know, one way or the other. But I just wanna make sure that y'all feel that the parking requirement will be satisfied.
So I'm gonna let John answer that question.
Appreciate that, great question, great question. So, um, everybody knows that Keeman, his dad, his family, his brother Pete and I went to college together back at U of H. We've been friends for a very, very long time. So parking is an issue. Um, anybody that knows me knows I can get pretty passionate about that. We're not gonna bring all that up from last year. Um, but what we've done is I've, I, I have an tentative agreement with Keeman based on whether or not we go forward, that he is gonna go ahead and lease parking spaces to me. And they fall within the three-hundred-foot rule of the front door of the building. So I really have unlimited parking that's for the hula bar because we're friends. So that agreement, I've already put it in front of the city. I don't know if, I don't know, Dick, if he shared it with you or not, but.
I haven't.
It'll be, it's all drafted. So we're not too worried about parking. So we would actually park, we would have a, what do they call it, Brad? It's a, it's a, um, private parking agreement? What do you call it?
Like a valet service?
No, 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 it's just a private parking agreement. So that I would have so many, I'd put signs up, you know, for hula bar, whatever.
Right, and he has met all the requirements. So I, I put one recommendation back to him for change. Once that's made, we'll bring that back to legal for a second review.
But, so we actually have the parking situation. We, we should not encompass, based on the square footage of the building, at eighty square feet per vehicle. There's a little bit of a gray area as to is it the overall square footage? Is it the only public use square footage? What is it? But we're looking at maybe, I would say, eight to twelve cars to meet the current parking requirements. Eight to twelve, which I would go ahead and get it from, uh, from, uh, from Keeman. And really, I mean, people park in my parking lots all the time. They're walking all over the place with it.
That agreement was written, what, fifteen or twenty-five spots with them, I think it was.
Maybe it was fifteen.
It was ade- it was adequate.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was adequate. It's, it's, it's whatever the requirement is, Keeman's already assured me I can have whatever I need. So that's in place. So we'll, we'll, we'll get around that right there. But as, as well as you know, too, question for you guys. Are you guys gonna do the Okie, the, uh, parking lot in front of Aspen's too, like you did? The one at Okies? Yeah, I know. No, I'm gonna expense some money, so. They actually added in, what, twelve, fifteen spaces? What'd y'all add to that parking lot?
Yeah, we, it went from forty-four from the Walker parking study to when we angled them, we gained thirteen more spots. It's fifty-seven in that parking lot now.
So, I mean, just based on that, with the load that we currently had prior to rebuilding the hula bar, you just basically added everything I need. But I'm still gonna go to Keeman and pay him rent every month and to have access to those vehicles. So that shouldn't be a problem. Trying to think of everything. Now, I do have a question, one more. Um, I'm not real familiar with the goings-on of council meetings and all that. If we sit down and y'all meet with Frank, is this tableed till December? Or is this something we could work out in a private council session where you can approve or not approve? How does that work? I don't know how that.
Well, the ultimate approval's gotta be at a meeting.
At a meeting?
Correct.
So we push it to December?
I mean, obviously, the, the negotiations would be, um, in the interim.
Correct.
Until we can get something that would be brought back to council for final approval.
Okay, alright. Okay. Is there a way to call a special session? And this is the reason why. The project, the, the TMBC license itself is gonna take me about ninety days to get because the state's backed up and anybody that's in government, anybody that knows anything about the state of Texas, after December fifteenth, they don't go back to the office until probably the seventh or eighth of January. So you're losing three weeks right there. A typical process, it's eight weeks, turns into twelve. So we're kind of on a time crunch. And Frank and I'd like to go ahead and get our deal arranged so that he can get some rent money. And I'd like to get underway with the construction as well. So is there something we can do to maybe speed that along? If there's an agreement made?
Yeah, that, so, so what'll happen is after the negotiations and, and everyone agrees on that in that meeting, it will still have to be brought back to council because I couldn't make that decision nor could Brad on our own without council's approval. So it would still have to come back here no matter what.
Okay.
Um, yes, we could have a special meeting. We might not have enough people to make a quorum being that we're canceling those other meetings near the holidays ourselves. So if we don't have a quorum, there's nothing gonna happen.
That's fair.
Uh, when it's, when it's a special meeting, you need a super majority.
Yeah, you need four out of five.
You need four out of five, all of them in here.
Okay.
To be able to make a decision and hold a quorum, so.
Okay, when's the next council meeting proposed?
First.
First Tuesday in December.
First Tuesday in December, okay.
So does somebody have a motion? Do we wanna go ahead and table this until some negotiations are underway and bring it back? Need a motion for that, do we not?
A motion to table this until it can be brought back with more clarity and descriptive plans and some negotiations with the city regarding the terms of the, uh, agreement. Anything else I need to add?
Uh, are you gonna add the walkway to the Okies parking lot?
With considerations for the wa- oh, for walkway to the Okies parking lot and considerations for proximity to that traffic corner. Whatever, I mean, I don't know what the rules on that are. But that's probably the biggest sticking point as far as the design goes for me.
And, and just real quick to add to that, I did talk to Brad about that. When Rick and I were down there measuring this, that stop sign is awfully far back anyway. Regardless of whether he puts a palapa up there or not, if you're standing at the crosswalk, what would be the crosswalk from where that stop sign is, and I'm sure David would agree with me, you're looking at about a sixty-degree angle across that, that property anyway to pick up the traffic in your eyesight. We need to entertain moving that more towards the corner. It'll line up the walkways to the deck that's beside your current building and the sidewalk where it connects. There's still enough room that you won't be into the street and you won't impede on a crosswalk. So, um, I also brought to Brad that maybe we should mark those crosswalks. Not put a light there, we have the light on Clear Lake Road, but we should mark them from Aspen's to the parking lot and from your existing building over to in front of the Soul Freak building. Just mark them with the white paint so it's a designated crosswalk. Because right now it's not marked, there's just a white line for the stop sign. That will kind of help the visibility too of patrons walking across the street. Because it's, it's kind of a dangerous corner. I, I've been up at that corner quite a bit over the years. It's a dangerous corner. And I believe if we moved, from what Rick and I looked at, if you move that stop sign up, you can actually look down the sidewalk to pick up the traffic instead of looking through that property. So I don't think that, that pole you're referring to would be in someone's vision at that moment. But, but we need to look at that anyway regardless of this because that's still way far back. So we got a second for Alex's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Alex, got a second by Rick. Any more discussion this evening?
Mayor, if you, if you don't mind, uh, for, in the sake of expediency and efficiency on discussions with city attorney, I'd like to know if there are any outstanding items other than what Councilman Scanlon's already mentioned, the, the sidewalk in between and then that hard corner. Are there anything else that we need to be considering in our discussions with legal?
There is a drain underneath the deck that tie, it goes across Clear Lake Road and ties in. So we, we, we need access to be able to go in. So whatever we need to do maintenance on that, the new one we put in by the stage, that ties in to essentially that drain that's underneath that deck. So, you know, reason, you know, access for maintenance and all that is, is a reality. Not that, I don't think we're gonna have to go in there, but, you know.
It's a good thought.
Probably will when something's on top of it.
We can, we can design.
Well, and may, and maybe you can design a hatch or something that gives us access.
Yeah, we can get you a six-by-six that we can just pull up as part of it. We'll figure something out.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes and we will adjourn.
Thank you, John, appreciate you.
Nope. Oh, I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
Let's talk trash.
Last item. So we need to address the Marrow Way's contract. Brad Gotti.
So Mayor, I'm really leery of bringing this up because I was advised that every time this contract comes up, the city administrator loses his job, so. We do have.
That's why I let you bring it up.
We do have representatives from, yeah. So we do have, uh, representatives from Marrow Ways. Now I'd ask that they come up to the podium. And I'm gonna do some highlight briefs and let her correct me if we, if we need to. Uh, it has been twenty-twelve since the last official contract with the Marrow Ways. Uh, the couple of things they're looking to propose and go into is the twenty-twelve contract had the trash and recycle broke out as separate fees. They will be consolidated into one fee under this new one. Uh, they're also looking to go into a cart system where they will deliver sixty-gallon totes, sixty-four gallon totes to all the residents to replace what they had. And I, and, and other than that's going up to, what, sixteen, twenty?
Sixteen seventy-five.
Sixteen seventy-five. So it's not a big increase considering we're, we're eleven years since the last contact negotiation, but it's just really updating that. And I think it's pretty much the changes I'll turn.
Council has sort of.
Oh, yes, a big one.
So that's a big change, the hazardous.
So something that we discovered, Mayor and I found out that they're actually got a lot of good stuff in the, what was in the existing contract and will come for the new one is they give us four forty-yard dumpsters for free. So the, the garage sales, the barbecue, all that's at no charge. The other thing they're picking up at no, no charge is the hazardous waste annual pickup event. We've had EDC recently asked me to look into that and that's something, we'll work with them. They, we provide the location, they provide the staff to come out for the day and collect all that stuff. So I, I think it's very fair what they're asking. Anything I missed?
Well, I do wanna tell you, we're not here to talk about a great venue that may be coming to the city. We are talking trash. And potentially, we only have two holidays a year, depending on the calendar. So we rarely take three, but yet on Fall and Thanksgiving. So maybe Christmas and New Year's, but that's all we're asking on holidays. But we are here to answer any questions you may have regarding the new contract. We met with the mayor and Brad the other day and kind of hashed out a couple of things. So if anyone has any questions, we're here to answer them. And everyone will get two carts. They'll get a sixty-four for their trash and they'll get a thirty-five for their recycling. If you currently have a cart or a bin, we will go ahead and remove those. We'll let everyone know when we're coming through to deliver where they could put their old ones out at the curb and we'll take those away.
It's probably a good topic to mention, deciding on your services.
Yes.
Right, I mean, cur- and that's gonna stay the same. We will bill all the residents, the city does not bill the residents, we will bill. Um, one of the reasons we're going carted is we have, um, and it's not just in Clear Lake Shores, it's in several communities where people tend to not wanna pay for trash and maybe leave it at their neighbor's house. And so you must have a cart, you must put the cart out to have your trash picked up. So that really aids us in collections, uh, from a money standpoint[1788.82] from a money standpoint, and then collections from a trash standpoint. So, you also get a bundled brush that's picked up, you get heavy trash items that are picked up. And we discussed putting a notice up on the marquee, you know, if you have, if you're not a current trash customer, you need to get signed up by the first of January, because you won't get picked up.
Sheriff mentioned that this is actually a five-year agreement that you would be approving tonight. And can I get a job driving a trash truck?
Absolutely, if you can.
Obviously, it sounds like a need one. Oh, yeah.
Got your C D L?
Keep your job.
It is a five-year contract that we're requesting, I mean, we're, we are doing an investment in the community with all the new carts and all. There is a C P I that we bring to council to get approved if necessary. As Brad mentioned, we've gone like eleven years without an increase, because Shelley left, George Jones left, Brent left. Brad's here. See, Brad made the mistake of calling and saying, hey, can we talk about household hazardous waste event? We said, oh, we have a new city manager, so we came down and met with Brad, so, yeah. And I did tell you that day, that, you know, hopefully you won't make it, you'll make it through the council meeting, so.
Well, we asked, why has it been so long, and the answer was, because every time we try to negotiate it, y'all fire the city administrator.
And COVID came along in there, too, but yeah, yeah, Shelley left, George Jones, Brent, there's a couple of others in there, too, I think.
So, just curious, what is, refreshing my memory, what are we currently paying a month right now? How much is this going up?
Uh, essentially, you're paying about thirty-three a quarter.
Okay.
It's about, it's about.
So, it's going to go up about?
Just for trash, then you opt into the, currently you opt into the recycling program, and then it depends on if you're going the eighteen-gallon bin, topless bin, or if you're doing the thirty-five gallon on wheels with the lids. And that's anywhere, if, if my memory serves me right, six to eight dollars extra a quarter. So, you're in that, if, if you're doing the, the carded, you're coming in at about forty-two dollars, and so. We're looking at, if we did our math right, about forty-five dollar increase.
Yeah, it's not much.
About fifty bucks a quarter or something like that?
Yeah, about fifty dollars a quarter, and you get the hazardous waste, which is a big deal. That's a big deal.
And then we made sure in the contract that we've got the roll-offs for the city's use, and then when there's civic events, we provide dumpsters or community boxes or those type of things.
I really like that you're not charging extra for the sample.
It's all inclusive.
Is that the same one that's putting their trash in your trash?
What street are you on? Any other questions?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve our renewal contract with the Marrow Waste.
Okay. Got a motion by Amanda?
I'll second it.
Got a second by Jeff, any more discussion on it? All in favor? Okay, motion passing.
Thank you all very much.
Unanimous, thank you.
See us in December with red carts and blue carts.
Awesome.
Just for clarification, too, these new rates will not go into effect until January.
That's correct.
Good.
Yeah, when we send out the billing, around the first of December, there'll be a flyer in with the billing, going over any new requirements, talking about brush and heavy trash and reemphasizing Mondays and, I mean, Tuesdays and Fridays and that type of thing. So, there'll be a letter in there. We'll also provide that to city staff where the new folks who aren't signed up yet will, can get that information. Thank you all.